Welcome. Welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, as citizen input for items not on the agenda, we do have Charles Bayer in the room with us, so please join us in the microphone.
Hello. I'm Charles Bayer. I live in Redmond, Oregon. I'd like to thank the Deschutes County Commissioners for the wonderful job that they're doing. I'd like to thank the Deschutes County Commissioners for giving me this time to speak this morning. I'd like to talk about a topic that's important to me and I think important to a lot of people. The topic is called depopulationism, and I am a depopulationist. And depopulationism is an idea that was created by the Chinese government in 1980, and it's also known as the one-woman-one-child policy. And I feel that this is an important issue. I feel that in order to save the planet Earth, we need to go, everybody needs to become a depopulationist right now. And so I think this is an important issue. I think this is an issue that should be discussed politically in the state of Oregon. And I think that, I think it's time for Oregonians to stand up and save the planet. I think it's time for Oregonians to lead the world by example. I think it's time for Oregonians to discuss this matter logically and rationally and with common sense. And I think it's time for Oregonians to lead the world and to save the world. And I would encourage the voters of Oregon and the voters of Deschutes County to only vote for officials that are publicly stating that they are depopulationists. And I would urge the people of Deschutes County to run for political office as depopulationists. And I think that, that's it. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Charles?
So there's also a voicemail to all of us from Kate Havstead, and as I say, I did speak to her, and it was referring to the Thornburg Water Mitigation Plan and our choice to not hear an appeal on that topic. So is there anybody else on Zoom possibly? And any phone calls that we don't, phone numbers we don't recognize? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, consent agenda.
I'm so move.
Second.
Hearing, motion, and second, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Item number nine, consideration of acceptance of the Department of Justice Domestic Violence Grant. Make sure we have, yep, there's Kathleen, hello?
Good morning. How are you today?
Very good.
Hey, how are you?
I'm doing well. Thanks so much for having me. My name is Kathleen Mancoupe for the record, and I'm Management Analyst for the DA's office. And we have a second year of grant funding, or I guess a second cycle of grant funding for a domestic violence grant. We are asking for approval to accept this award through 2023. The grant officially started October 1st and will run through September 30th, 2023. I'm sorry, 2024, I apologize, I'm getting my three years mixed up here. Our big question, I guess also through this, is approval for the grant, which allows us to really dive into some of the issues regarding domestic violence. We have a team of individuals that meet on a regular basis that involves Saving Grace, so some of the funding goes to our partners for this program. And it also supports a domestic violence investigator with its house at the DA's office and allows us to take a deeper dive into these cases and really try to identify cases that are high risk and ensuring the safety of our community members that are involved in these types of crimes. Our one big question with this is, as I added, in addition to funding, approving, asking for approval for the actual grant, is the fact that we have funding for the domestic violence investigator, but we know that the funding, depending on where that person would come in, given our new policy, and they say new, it's been around for a couple of years now, that allows to determine whether or not somebody starts at level one or higher up on the funding scale. We wouldn't be able to fund somebody for the full three years if they came in at, let's say, a level five or a level six. And we'd like some guidance on whether or not we can effectively advertise for this position and how we go about doing that if we did identify somebody who was, had a lot more experience. And we do know we have an excellent candidate right now who's currently doing the position, and we also have other people that have expressed interest that also have a lot of experience.
So there's a little bit of clarity. So there's one position, is that correct?
Correct.
And there's somebody's doing this job right now?
Correct.
And we've had this grant in the past also, so this is the next cycle of the grant from the federal government, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so, and then what are we referring to that the position may change over? You're expecting somebody to leave or open recruitment, or what's the concept there?
So the position currently, we had a full-time domestic violence investigator at the DA's office. When she left the position, we actually are contracting with Sun River at the moment for that position. And so when the no-cost extension ends on the current grant, which will be March, we will be opening that up for traditional kind of recruitment and posting that position because the goal is to have that person actually within the DA's office rather than doing it through a contract.
Good, yeah, that was a little bit I was missing, but now I understand, okay.
Sorry.
Yeah. But I do know that we have done this over the years. This is a grant that we've qualified for and implemented in the past, so this type of work has been done with this grant previously.
Kathleen, I was curious, how many communities around the state or around the nation have a focused domestic violence initiative or program like this? Is this uncommon, common? Are we on the leading edge, or?
I think there are a number of organizations around the community within Oregon, as well as across the country, that have domestic violence initiatives. I don't necessarily know specifically how ours compares. I have Brittany, who's one of our DDAs, on the line as well, and she has been involved in this program for longer than I have, and she may be able to address that a little bit more.
So, yeah, the question is, what does it look like for other?
Yeah, is this a relatively unique thing, or is this a common thing? And my support for accepting the grant is not contingent upon the answer to that question. I'm just curious.
Good morning. My name is Brittany Haber. I'm a deputy district attorney here, and I am on the high-risk DV team. I haven't been on the program for more than a year and a half, so I have very limited knowledge as well. I don't know what other programs are implemented across the nation or across the state, but this has certainly been very valuable to our office.
I was just reading that domestic violence had actually gone up so much in the last 18 months because of COVID. You know, and honestly, when I first became a commissioner and they were showing us the different sources of why people were on parole and probation, domestic violence was extremely much higher than I ever could have imagined. So, you know, Saving Grace, thank goodness we have it here, and yes, we, you know, we definitely need to keep this grant in our community. The numbers are really very, very unfortunate.
I will, I will say too, that one of the interesting things is that the level of work that's being done here in Deschutes County has been increasing over the years, and we've continually taken on additional components, adding to the program with the lethality assessment, now that we have a domestic violence investigator who specifically takes the time to meet with the victims, she's able to develop a rapport with them, and is able to look at the case a little more deeply, because that is her focus, instead of relying all on law enforcement, who, a lot of times when they're there at the scene, don't necessarily remember to identify all of those key pieces. And the work that she's been doing is helping us really be able to prosecute these cases more effectively. And it's been pretty impressive that it's been since the mid-2000s, a real steady increase in the level of work that Deschutes County has been doing and what we've been able to add in, the fact that we have this high-risk team that meets monthly to really discuss these cases, identify where there are gaps. So there's continual improvement, which has been quite impressive. I was pleased when I was reading the reports.
Actually, the report said they meet twice monthly.
They, yeah, and we're, so we're looking at that. Sometimes these cases take a really long time to get up to speed, and so I think depending on the progress where we're at, sometimes we've been meeting twice, but there has been some discussion that maybe monthly is more effective because not a lot changes every two weeks.
Gotcha.
Great, well.
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask, from the earlier grant period, that's wrapping up, I mean, I was going to ask what you would say, kind of are the key highlights or, you know, some of the important things that were accomplished? And what I just heard you say was, you know, there's this higher level of focus for these issues and a higher level of coordination, and I mean, is that, is that, are those the key things that these grant resources allow us to do, or is there a lot more?
Well, I can also have Brittany talk to this a little bit too. She may be able to add a little bit more, but I do know, one of the big things for this particular grant, when we started last time, was the addition of this domestic violence investigator. That was the big piece that had been missing up to this point. And we're also looking at developing some checklists for law enforcement and figuring out how to do that so that doesn't add additional workload to law enforcement, and there's some training. So, you know, it's the resources, the human resource, which has been a big piece, but also the coordination and supporting that and making sure that Saving Grace is an active partner. So our funding actually helps, the contract that we have with them actually helps pay for a part-time FTE for them to be able to really work with these victims and provide resources. So really holistic and having those, those resources really benefits our community.
Great.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, I move accepting the 2021 Department of Justice Improving Criminal Justice Responses to Domestic Violence Dating Violence Sexual Assault and Stalking Grant Program. And, okay, and this is what you're asking for, and move approval of covering any costs beyond the grant award if the selected FTE candidate's starting step exceeds available grant funding. Now, is that possible for us to do that without actually a dollar amount? Or would that have to come back to us?
Certainly communicate an intent to do that, and then there would obviously be the appropriate paperwork between finance and HR if that occurs. I think they were alluding to pay equity issues that could kick in and require certain additional costs associated with the salaries and whatnot.
Well, I know it's an important position to have.
I'll second.
Well, and I'll acknowledge that that's definitely a concept that comes up, you know, are we just opening up, you know, kind of a wide-open request here for financial support? So let's make sure it's real clear, you know, covering any costs beyond the grant award if selected FTE start, the step exceeds available grant funding. So let's acknowledge that that's for the FTE position, because it could also be any costs. It was kind of the terminology, you know, oh, wait a minute, we're just talking to FTE, yeah. So supporting of the FTE. So just, that's for discussion.
Would you rather that's a covering any costs beyond the grant award for the selected FTE candidate's starting step if it exceeds available grant funding?
Well, I mean, I think we made it clear just by this discussion already, so. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10, consideration of board signature of a document for the purchase of a paint truck chassis. Randy, Randy McCully, good to see you, it's been a while.
Good to see you. Good morning.
So, yeah, you might have just been brought in. We are on this agenda item for the paint truck chassis. Please share with the concept here.
Hey, I'm Randy McCully, Fleet Manager. I work in the Road Department. We are replacing a 1999 Volvo Cabover chassis. So there's two parts to a paint truck. You have the chassis, and then you have, that carries the platform with all the paint striping equipment on it. We are replacing the, we're purchasing the chassis now, and the next fiscal year we plan on buying the paint striping chassis. With availability, the way everything is, it has to be spaced out, because it takes a year to, or close to a year to get a truck, and it can't all happen in one year. So this new chassis, I'll let you guys ask questions about it if you want, but.
Well, and I think, you know, this has been budgeted for, and it's really just the fact that it's over 150,000 that we're even looking at it, because it is pretty standard purchase. So just kind of putting clarity on that already. So it, there's, doesn't need to be scrutiny of this, because it is in the budget already.
And the good news is, they took the sales tax off our documentation, so that was good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions. The need for, you know, modern, adequately maintained, you know, paint striping equipment is, seems pretty clear.
And I'm driving a new electric vehicle that sure knows when those stripes are out there, you know, it really, it does a lot of sensing now, so it's interesting, because you know, usually it's the driver watching the lines. Now the car is watching the lines, so it's a different world we're getting, stepping into also.
Are you saying the car will drive for you?
Possibly. So one of the other thoughts is, would the old paint rig go on this chassis or not? Would you'd never use this?
No, there are so many areas that this field has advanced, and that's part of, we originally were going to just replace the chassis, and as we started researching it, so like with bead technology, there's glass beads that go into the stripe to provide reflectivity. There's what they call double-drop beads, where you have multiple bead guns putting down different-sized beads in layers to create a better reflectivity for the new vehicles to be able to see on the road. So the, there's multiple things, the types of pumps we have, the way we track the inventory, it, our platform is basically obsolete. Like it'll paint a road, but for our future needs, it will not serve those long-term needs.
Good. Well, yeah, understood. That helps us to understand the big picture here, so.
Okay.
And please.
I move to approve agreement number 2021-842 for the purchase of a paint striping chassis from Houston Freightliner.
And I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you. Okay, truck is on the way.
We hope.
Thank you.
Yeah. Item number 11, consideration of document regarding St. Charles Pez and Sage View. There we go, Janice.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm hoping you can hear me okay. I forgot my headset. This is Janice Garceau, Director of Deschutes County Behavioral Health. I'm here to request approval and board signature on document number 2021-246, which is the contract between Deschutes County Health Services and St. Charles for their Pez and Sage View services to indigent individuals. That's un- or underinsured individuals who are receiving care. This is a longstanding contractual arrangement. It involves passing through Oregon Health Authority Service Element Dollars specifically intended to cover inpatient psychiatric indigent care. You have the contract before you. There are not significant changes to the contract other than a slight increase in the amount beginning this fiscal year. The contract is renewed now to be in alignment with OHA's County Financial Assistance Awards schedule, which has moved to the calendar year to add complexity. And the total contract amount is for $297,000, including a 10% performance withhold based at this point on one metric for performance.
So you mentioned, yeah, service element dollars is state dollars coming through, since we're the county and the local public health authority would be the entity receiving these dollars, and St. Charles manages and runs this 24-hour facility. Just as a kind of a note for education, is there, how much interaction is there for, you know, client placement or real-time management of who's utilizing these services? Or is that done very much through the St. Charles Emergency Room and doctors' decisions there?
There's considerable interaction. So our mobile crisis assessment team and our Deschutes County Stabilization Center staff are often involved in assessing people, recommending that they be served in the ED if they need a higher level of care. On occasion, not occasion, actually frequently, we respond to the ED to help assess individuals, especially given that the hospital and the Redmond ED in particular has been short-staffed for their social work staff. We are often involved in discharge planning. Sometimes discharge involves a short period of time getting established through the stabilization center and services. And we have a consultation model set up so that if our existing clients, our open clients are being served inpatient in either the Pez unit or Sage View, clinicians are notified of that, they have an opportunity to attend multidisciplinary case staffings and participate in planning for treatment and discharge planning. So quite a bit of coordination and collaboration across systems.
Well, and I can imagine it's, you know, is this somebody we know, referring to the staff of Deschutes County, long-term relationship with somebody who may have been in and out of the system? So it provides that long-term view to critical situations, I'm sure, also. Great.
It does, although these dollars do cover folks who might be served by another behavioral health provider in the community. So, but this is for anyone in the community who is receiving those services and does not have access to adequate coverage. These dollars are intended to help support their care.
Great.
Janice, how many people can be helped at Sage View? I see that it serves all three counties.
There are, it's a 16-bed facility and has had to limit beds because of staffing, sorry, I'm sorry, it's 12-bed facility. It's had to limit beds because of staffing shortages, and for a period of time also because of COVID safety protocols.
Okay, so it was 12, or it is 12 now?
It is 12.
It is 12. Was 16, but because they're short-staffed?
No, I believe it's been 12 all along.
And that is, that's 12, and then there's the five PES beds as well, or is that, do those overlap?
Well, they may occasionally overlap. Someone could leave a PES bed to enter Sage View, but the PES beds are really beds in the ED that are specifically identified for people who need to be housed within an emergency department setting for a psychiatric condition. They may not, they may be admitted to Sage View, or they may not. They may be awaiting a state hospital bed, if such a thing exists anymore.
And we know that it doesn't.
Yeah.
We know that it's rare, yeah.
Yeah. And Janice, can you, can you kind of help us understand the, kind of, the big geographic picture? Secure inpatient acute psychiatric care. Where is the next closest place where that is available?
Well, it would be in the Portland area or in the valley. It's not available regionally other than in our region, frankly, so it's quite limited.
And I was trying to kind of put this contract in the context of, like, you know, all the kind of, like, organizational framework and partnership we have with St. Charles. Is there a, is there a multi-year agreement between the county and St. Charles in addition to, you know, for Sage View and the PES, in addition to this contract? I feel like we discussed a multi-year agreement in the past and kind of that, you have the negotiation of that, or that's coming up for renewal soon.
Yes, so this contract has been part of a multi-year agreement. I mean, this is just one portion of dollars specific to indigent care. We have had a multi-year contract from, I believe it started in 2005, so it is coming up for renewal, and we have begun a series of conversations with the help of our County Legal Services Department and Sage View's legal department, and Dr. Barry, our medical director, their medical staff, our administrative staff, to talk about what that arrangement looks like in the future and start to work through some of the kinks. And we also are part of what's called the Acute Care Council, which is a regularly convening group of individuals, agencies really in the community, that are part of the array of services that individuals who are receiving acute care intersect with. So the hospital, the CMHP, law enforcement, other providers.
So according to this document, it says that the contractor agrees that it will continue to operate until at least December 30th, 2025?
Correct.
Okay. So that's at least some, some services here. A bit limited, I would say, when you think of the population, what is it, 265,000 people, something like that, that they're, if they're serving between the three counties? A bit limited, I would say, when you think of the population. What is it? 265,000 people, something like that, that there's, if they're serving between the three counties?
Yes. And Commissioner, you know, from other conversations and presentations we've made to the board, that the number of secure residential treatment beds in our community not only has not grown, but has shrunk even though our service population has grown significantly and access to state hospital beds has been eliminated except for the aid and assist population. So we're really, we're really, uh, in pretty dire straits for supporting people who need hospital-level care right now in this community.
Yes. I, I'm very aware and I, I, I think it's really unfortunate that our side of the mountain hasn't gotten the support that it truly warrants.
Is there a motion?
Um, yes, I move approval, I move board approval and signature of the St. Charles PES Sage View document number 2021 dash two four six, which actually started January 1st, 2021. I just thought that was kind of interesting. It took us, what is it? 11, 11 months, 10 months to get here? Something like that?
We're trying to harmonize the, the calendar year and the fiscal year change from OHA. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. And, you know, as, as you are all very aware, the hospital has been, um, very busy. Uh, so it did take a while to get this contract executed, but we're there now and, um, in good shape for next year.
All right. So I'll second the motion.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you. Good discussion.
Thanks, Janice.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Item number 12, discussion of increasing FTE for Public Health Early Intervention and Outreach Services Program. Thanks for joining us in person.
Monica.
Hello. I am, thanks for having us today. I am Kathy Christensen. I am the supervisor of the STD, HIV and Adolescent Health Programs for Public Health. And for some time now, I have been working with, um, congregate settings for all things COVID. So, um, working on outbreaks, um, testing, and now we are providing booster shots. So, um, and I add that because it does take a lot of time and effort, but, um.
Well, priorities are changing around right now, correct?
Yes, yes.
Other duties as required?
Yes.
Oh, boy.
But my main job is the STD, HIV and Adolescent Health Programs. And I've brought Amber Knapp with me today. She is our, um, public health nurse who does STD and HIV work. And, uh, it's not the easiest work, but she, I've been here for many years and she is the best STD HIV nurse we've ever had. So.
Thank you.
She, um, is very persistent and she is kind and instills trust in people and that's what we need. And so, and, and just a great nurse. So, um, wanted you to meet her today.
Nice to meet you.
So, um, we are asking to, um, add a data analyst, data analyst position to our EISO grant. We are currently in, um, our fourth year of the grant and we didn't really know what funding would be like going forward until recently. And so I think the state needed to see, um, you know, the effectiveness of the grant before committing to ongoing funding. And so earlier this year, a few months ago, the, um, year three report came out that showed the program has been really effective. And, um, it also has, um, gotten national recognition as a best practice program. So now the state is talking about future funding and how we're going to be funded for this program going forward. And, um, this is a tri-county grant, so we are also working in Jefferson and Cook County as well with our partners there. So we recently had asked for a nurse position be added to the EISO grant because of the increase in cases. So, um, for syphilis, last year we had 13 cases and we're already at 24 cases this year, which is a lot. And syphilis is getting national, hitting national news right now just because of the increases and the concerns, especially around congenital syphilis. And so we are working very hard on those cases. We've also had 10 cases in Jefferson County, which is a lot for that small county.
Is the 24 including the 10 in Jefferson?
No, 24 is just Deschutes County.
Okay.
And then Jefferson County's had 10 cases so far this year. And in Gonorrhea, last year we had, um, 93 cases and this year we're up to 153 already. So it's just taking a lot of time. And so knowing that our funding is going to go forward, the state has told us to ask for what we need. And some of the recommendations that came out of the year three report, as well as recommendations coming from the National Strategic Plan for STDs is that we do more data and that, data analysis and look for, you know, clusters or risk populations and, um, being able to identify. We, we have really rich data in our database. We just don't have the time or the personnel to really work on analyzing that data. So we need a position that can, uh, work on that more. They also could, um, do more, uh, do quarterly reports and a tableau on the website for local providers. It's really important that providers know what's happening in the community. We are trying to do provider outreach, but that takes a lot of time. And so, um, these diseases are complicated and it, uh, it's, we just want the providers to have more information and be, you know, have readily, readily be able to access that information. We also need to standardize our data and, um, this person would also be able to provide the leadership for outbreak or cluster response and, um, which we don't currently have.
So, uh, a new position to be funded with, uh, existing funds that hadn't been spent last year, but Oregon Health Authorities offering to add this into the, to the, the contract annually after that.
Yeah. And then we've had discussion about how they're going to, how the funding will come to us past year five. We're hoping that it can be put into a program element versus this five-year grant that's a calendar year grant because it's, it's complicated for funding. Um, so we've talked to them. They, the, two of the managers from OHA met with myself and our manager to talk about what would work best for public health funding going forward. The state is also receiving some, uh, additional STD funding from the CDC that will be given to the counties through a funding formula. So the funding, um, we definitely have funding going forward.
I, I'm supportive of adding this position. I'm, I'm trying to get a better sense of kind of that, the epidemiology, data analysis capacity overall within public health. You know, one of the touch points for, for us on the Board of Commissioners is getting the, you know, the, the weekly COVID reports right now that Jenny Faith was providing and now Jessica Terpstra is providing. And I, I have to admit, I don't actually have a good handle on, you know, do we, do we have an epidemiologist, epidemiologist position at public health? Is that vacant right now? Who, how many other people do, uh, you know, do the kind of data analysis that we're talking about? And, um, you know, is there, um, is there just so much need for, 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 you know, for data analysis, number crunching, kind of looking for trends, you know, identifying clusters, things like that, that we just need, uh, you know, multiple people to be doing that?
Yeah. So I think that's becoming more of a requirement as we move forward, that we really know what our data is saying, right? And so we do, we do currently have an epidemiologist position that is vacant. That's Jenny Faith's position. And Jessie Terpstra actually works for the EISO grant, but she's spending 10 hours a week helping with those reports.
Got it.
And, um, so.
So if you had her, her time back, then some of this need would be being addressed. She would be able to address some, some of the need that we're talking about.
Right. But her position is really the EISO coordinator position. She's not hired as a data person.
Got it.
Currently, yeah. But she has training and her schooling is in epidemiology. So she is capable of doing the epidemiology. She's just not in that position currently.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. That, that was very helpful though.
Yeah.
Understand how COVID is, yeah. How, how COVID and, and, um, labor shortages are, are affecting us.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Commissioner Dare?
Well, I remember in 19 that the STD, um, you know, sexually transmitted diseases was an issue in 19. And then COVID hit and then I, you know, did we really hear anything about it last year? But hearing these numbers now, um, you know, definitely they're jumping up. So.
Yeah, it's a big increase.
Big increase. I, I know before we were like, we, weren't we at like the top of the state or something in 19 with our numbers? So, um, they weren't this high, but we were like the top county of the state. And so, yes, it seems like, um, we need to be working harder on it.
Yeah, we, we don't have the worst rate, the, you know, some of the counties, there are other counties that have worse rates than Deschutes County and, Jefferson County would be one of those counties.
Because of their population, they're over 25,000 and they have 10 cases where, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, they're high enough that we need to really be working on and especially all of the syphilis cases. We really don't want to see any congenital syphilis cases in our area. It's a huge concern.
Could you explain to the public what congenital syphilis is, just so they know?
Yeah. Do you want?
So congenital syphilis is when a pregnant woman has syphilis and she can pass it to her baby and the baby can be born with all kinds of complications. And 40% of babies, um, actually die in the womb if the mother is positive for syphilis. So it's very dangerous and can cause all kinds of complications. And the baby needs a lot of medicine when they're born, if they do test positive.
Um, thank you for that.
Now we know more.
I, I knew it was not a, not a good thing, but that's truly.
Very scary.
Something, yes. Frightening.
Yeah.
Do you, um, do you two have sort of a, you know, an explanation story for us for, for what's going on with these rapid, dramatically increased numbers this year? I mean, is this, is this, you know, the pandemic is producing certain behaviors in people or, you know, because we've had the pandemic, people aren't going to the doctor or, you know, like what is, uh, do, do, do you have a, um, an ex, you know, ex, you know, theories or ideas on what's going on?
I, I think it's partially could be COVID related. Yeah. Like you said, people weren't going to the doctor. Doctors are more focused on COVID. They're so overwhelmed right now that they're not thinking syphilis, you know, and we, and syphilis is complicated. We have patients go in to see the doctor and they're, you know, the doctor doesn't recognize the symptoms necessarily. Because, you know, people just don't think syphilis anymore. So we're trying to do outreach, but it's difficult because the doctors are so busy that they don't necessarily have time to focus on other things. And we are seeing a large increase in some of these in our houseless population.
So this is for discussion today to show up on a future agenda item as a FTE request on, is, would be.
The FTE, it's, the request today is for approval to, um, recruit for that position.
So, yeah, our agenda doesn't have it worked out that far, I don't think. So this is kind of.
It says no motion, but it would come back to us.
Yeah. So another step is going to be putting on either consent agenda or another board meeting, but, uh, we've definitely come up to speed and, uh, you know, understand what's going on here now. So we'll take it from there. And, yeah, Nick can help with that to make sure there's a, a specific FTE request for the, for the counties.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, so one, one last question. Is there somebody to hire out there? I mean, have you thought about the recruitment? So we're hearing it all over the place, small business and everything. You know, is there, we got open positions and now we're going to add another FTV, FTE. Just thoughts on the industry.
Certain person who's interested in the position. So, um, that's good. And we did, uh, we have found a, a nurse for, um, who's going to be perfect. Who is interested in our nursing position, which nurses are really hard to find right now. So, yeah, I think we'll be able to fill these positions.
Yeah. We only had one nurse apply and luckily she was amazing. So.
Oh, good. Okay.
Yeah.
So this will be a good fit for some, yeah, someone.
Is it someone within your, the team or is it somebody outside?
Someone within the team is really interested.
Oh, good.
Then you're going to have to fill that position.
Yeah.
Well, there we go. We just got down to it. So we still need to bring somebody else in.
Which there's others that we know are interested in that position. So I think we're going to do okay in this. We have an amazing team.
That's great to hear.
Great people working under me. So.
Yeah.
And thank you, Kathy, for coming in today. It's truly nice to see you in person and, um, yes, thanks for what you.
Nice to meet you, Amber. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, item 13. And so, uh, the way our day is going to go, it looks like, so this is going to be, uh, item 13, even 15 minutes before we had thought it might happen. And, uh, we're going to break our day into two because we did set a one o'clock item for the, um, Lepine Fire District ASA discussion. So we'll, we'll finish some point here and then we'll just have a couple, maybe a couple of hours before our second part of the day, which will be nice. Uh, and then also, I mean, there was possible executive session we could do before lunch too. So just, just setting that up. Eric Crop had one for labor.
Yes, he did give it to us.
Well, I thought he'd fit that in.
Yeah.
He has a separate one?
He has one for today.
You can communicate with him and see if he might be ready.
He said we, he handed it and said we'd do it after the one o'clock, but we probably could.
We'll see.
We do it this morning.
Okay. So, yeah, American Rescue Recovery Plan Act or Rescue Plan. Uh, this is our regular scheduled item. So go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Greg Munn, County CFO, and I'm joined by Dan Emerson, our Budget Manager. And this was, uh, follow-up to Monday's meeting. And one of the questions the board had was to have the High Desert Food and Farm Alliance come back, if possible, with a presentation on the, um, sort of, uh, similar request to the 1017 protein ask. This would be a vegetable and fruit ask for, um, for the local food banks. So the Executive Director is on vacation and, um, I wasn't able to get her to join. So I'd suggest that we push, as soon as she gets back, we can reschedule that for another meeting, if that's what you'd like to do.
Yeah. And I, I shared a voicemail with her also and trying just to communicate a little bit. She said she'll try to hand it off to somebody, but yeah, it's just not going to come together for today, obviously.
I, I was tracking that a little bit more of the kind of budget detail, financial information that we wanted did come in, but uh, I, I think it could be packaged in a way that's a little clearer as well. So.
Yeah, exactly. And I, and I think they're aware of that. They just didn't have the time to pull it together and she's not, she's not actually in town. So. Other than that, we, uh, in front of you, I've given you a handout this morning, which is a revised list of our eligible projects. So that's up to date as of this morning. If there's any other items on here you'd like to discuss or consider for funding.
Item 15, you might want to add COR to that description.
Yes.
Affordable home ownership through the COR.
K O R.
Yes, K O R. And, um, yes, I did have the privilege of going to, um, their new, um, groundbreaking yesterday. Five 900 square foot cottages in an orchard district and it actually, um, it's named Crosetta and it's, um, Italian, meaning growth. And there is an Italian plum tree in the back of the property, which they're going to keep growing. So anyway, it was, you know, they're really doing an amazing job in five homes there. And then hopefully their next project is going to be even bigger family homes. So, you know, but then again, we have the, it's one bedroom. So those cottages are going to be. But, you know, with our ADUs, with the 900 square foot, that it will be allowed in the countryside, those could clearly have two bedrooms in them. So, um, hopefully when we can get that through next year, we'll be able to add a lot more. So hopefully when we can get that through next year, we'll be able to add a lot more housing for our community, workforce housing.
Uh, so, uh, also jumping down to ninety-seven is Tumalo Sewer System. We had talked about a three, or a five hundred thousand dollar, just kind of, uh, whole, hold item there. So I don't know if, is that documented in there?
No.
So that was in our minutes from two weeks ago. Remember, I mean, it was just mentioned that we would start the process by saying, let's put a bucket there. Is that in there, Dan?
We didn't include that.
Yeah, okay, so.
But we can.
Let's, yeah, let's put a, it's kind of a, yeah, a bucket or whatever at that point.
Five hundred thousand dollar hold.
Mm-hmm.
And the approved or on the request?
Well, yeah, so requested, I guess, is, is the, yeah. As I say, we did talk about it at a board meeting and that was the scope of what we started with, so just documenting it somehow.
Absolutely.
And then yes, uh, yesterday I talked with Chris Doughty on number ninety-six, the Terrebonne Waterway System. Um, I believe what he told me yesterday and I wrote down was that, um, a million dollars might be appropriate for what we need to do. So should we confirm that with Chris? But that's what he had said, that, that's what we might be looking at.
Well, there was a, a multi-piece, uh, there was a multi-piece funding proposal. The, the million dollars is what would be needed to essentially buy into the, the waste, the wastewater treatment wetlands build out for Redmond right now. Um, and then there was additional, even additional pieces that, that, uh, that were part of that package. Uh, but that, you know, certainly that million dollars is the urgent item right now. And, um, I, I wanted to float the idea of, uh, I wanted to float the idea of potentially funding that, uh, funding that out of, um, transient room tax dollars instead. You know, the, these American Rescue Plan funds are, are, are meant to have a, um, broad, and, you know, broad impact for our community. Um, the, the Terrebonne wastewater project is really important. Um, but the, the benefits are, um, you know, that it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a geographically small portion of the county. And it is, um, you know, population wise, it's not the hugest, uh, part of the county either. Um, so while I think it's a really important project, I also think that, that, uh, you know, it's, we need to think about how we can have, you know, kind of broad, you know, population wise and geography wise, really broad impacts with these American Rescue Plan funds. Um, and the, you know, what Terrebonne can, can, can claim is that it is an incredibly important tourism driver for Deschutes County. So, uh, you know, because of that, I, it, it just would make sense to me that this being, uh, you know, Smith Rock, Terrebonne being, you know, one of the major tourist draws of our community, uh, that transient room tax revenues, uh, which are generated from tourism, um, you know, could be, could be spent to, you know, could be invested in that, in that community to maintain it as a incredible tourist destination. And we can save the American Rescue Plan funds for other kinds of direct, you know, COVID response and recovery type initiatives.
Well, then in yesterday, we actually, I believe, maybe got a number from Le Pine over a medical project they're considering. I think they were saying it's like a twelve million dollar project, but they were going to be asking us for five million. So is that something that we're going to be able to put on this list? If we're taking one off, but we're putting one on, yes.
Yeah, we'll add that to the list as soon as we receive it.
Okay.
We have, we have more requests than we have funds anyway, right? So the, the other one that, um, that, that kind of, kind of bubbled up during the Public Health Advisory Board meeting yesterday was, um, a healthcare workforce investment. So kind of, we, we, we cracked the seal on using ARPA funds to build the workforces we need with the childcare project. Um, and I, I think everyone would agree that in order to contain COVID and to, you know, come out of, uh, come out of this pandemic, uh, more resilient and more able to, to deal with, uh, you know, future public health, behavioral health, other health kind of stressors on our community. Um, we're, we're in desperate need of more, uh, healthcare workers. Um, so COCC, uh, some of the, you know, um, COCC, you know, our own Behavioral Health Department, St. Charles. You know, there was someone on the, on the, on the meeting yesterday who was talking about, you know, the, the dire need for dental assistance. Um, just across the board in the healthcare sector, there's a, there's a, you know, there's a need to, um, expand the pipeline of people who are able to come into health, healthcare professions and healthcare jobs in our community. So, uh, you know, um, we have no, I, you know, I, they didn't, there was no dollar amount or anything put out yesterday. But that's a, um, uh, just a potential project that, you know, I think is, is very fitting with the, the purpose of ARPA that, that I wanted to flag, uh, that I believe we'll, we'll get some kind of a letter of interest on soon.
You know, I really wish that they would follow the science when it comes to COVID. Um, people that have had COVID and recovered have antibodies. And someone in my family that is a dental hygienist, not in Deschutes County, but she, um, did not get her vaccination, but she had COVID and yet she had to, she was terminated from her position. And when, you know, if you see the science and the antibodies, according to the Israeli study, it's, you know, it's supposed to be much stronger and last quite some time. So I, you know, I think that's really unfortunate. Please, um, start recognizing antibodies.
So, uh, back to items ninety-six and ninety-seven, thanks for the comments here. I'm thinking, is there action here at ARPA dollars? Terrebonne wastewater system, uh, is there support or agreement that, uh, buying in, buying in for the benefit of Terrebonne to the Redmond system? I mean, it sounds like, you know, you're talking about where the money would come from, but I mean, the answer is yes. I mean, it sounds like, you know, so let's proceed and funding somehow.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Take a half a step into.
If we're talking about, if we're talking about taking a million dollars of ARPA funds to, to, to buy that, that chunk of wastewater treatment capacity in the wetlands at, at Redmond. You know, if we're talking specifically about using ARPA funds for that, I, I would have some hesitation.
Well, no, I'm just confirming that we, but we support the concept of buying in.
Yeah.
For future capacity. I'm just half a step.
Greg had said we were going to have a meeting about exactly how many TRT funds do we have that are sitting out there and what we can work with. And when are we going to have that, Greg? I know you mentioned it.
So, uh, so Nick asked me to spearhead that. It's slated for the twenty-second, November twenty-second would be the Board Action Meeting. And before then, I'll be setting up even today, setting up individual meetings with each of you to start that conversation in preparation for the twenty-second. And then we're also planning that to be part of the conversation at the mid-year budget update in December with the Budget Committee.
Yeah, so that'll come up a couple times before the end of the year. Uh, so as I say, how about we just refer to Terrebonne wastewater, so, because we're going to have a joint meeting with the City of Redmond here pretty soon, right?
Next week.
So, yeah, so if we, if we say, if we can say, you know, we've taken the half a step of confirming we're, we're going to be a partner at the, I think it's a million dollars, I don't know. You know, at the, we're going to be a partner for capacity for Terrebonne.
That's what Mr. Doughty said.
We don't even see where it's coming from at this point.
Right. I would, I would vote for that.
Yeah, okay, I'm just saying, if we all say, because that's where we're at. And then if we start talking about TRT opposed to ARPA, that's the next step and we need to do that locally anyways.
I, I would feel more comfortable doing that if I had, uh, just a sense of, of openness on the Board to, to looking at the TRT.
Well, that's what I'm offering.
Okay.
That's exactly what I'm offering.
Okay.
We're going to talk about TRT twice before the end of the year. We're going to meet next week with Redmond. There's money here and there's money in TRT. But the message to Redmond is, yes, we're going to be a partner in capacity for Terrebonne. But we don't, you know, they don't need to know that, where it's going to come from. So that's where I'm, that's exactly where I'm at.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, okay, so then, uh, the next item, so Tumalo. So there is a request, uh, possibly for starting to expend maybe up to a hundred thousand dollars. Chris Doughty was going to possibly join us right about the top of the hour here for a feasibility study, which is exactly what we did in Terrebonne. Uh, the community may be ready for that. So I, I don't know that that's an action item for us to vote on specifically, but just the intention and the, and the knowledge and the public, you know, acknowledgement that, uh, you know, that may be real close to being able to do that.
Yeah, yeah. No, if they have a, if they have a scope and budget for that now, I'm happy to, I'm happy to move forward.
And we're basically tasking our staff to do it because that's the same situation that Chris Doughty was in in Terrebonne.
Yes.
But as I say, and so all three of us have heard about it, it looks like we're nodding yes on that too. So if we see that in a, in a meeting in the near future, it's, yeah, generally, generally moving forward on that also.
I could definitely say that in nineteen, when we brought up the Terrebonne originally, um, yes, everyone wasn't as forward-thinking, but I believe today that we truly are, so that's good.
Okay, yeah, so we don't need to take that anymore.
Can I just ask a clarifying question about the Tumalo system? So, uh, we obviously didn't pick up the half a million dollars that you had asked to have obligated there. Is that a reserve amount or is that committed for a certain part of the system or just the?
Oh, no, that's reserve amount, it's, was the way I see it.
A reserve.
It's just the scope of an initial placeholder amount.
Okay, so we're going to call it the two, the Tumalo Sewer System Reserve and we'll put five hundred thousand dollars in the approved column.
And we might authorize some number, possibly about a hundred thousand dollars in the near future for a feasibility study.
Got it.
Good, so that, that's good communication for us at least.
And the total allocation we need to make for that, you know, the total commitments we make for that may end up being, very well end up being less than five hundred thousand. But we, we kind of set that as a ceiling. I mean, it, it, it sounds like, uh, you know, the, the impression I got from the discussion with Chris is that, you know, the, um, uh, the, the folks in Tumalo are very well organized and, 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 you know, proactive and forward-thinking and, and they may need a little help getting through the feasibility and, and, you know, just getting all their information ducks in a row. But then they're, you know, that, the actual, the actual build-out and, and all of that stuff, they may be, they may be very prepared to, to move that all forward on their own.
So you mentioned, uh, was Central Oregon Health Counsel or who, who said something about their jobs?
It was just an idea that came up during the Public Health Advisory Board.
Public Health Advisory, okay. So, um.
There was.
Yeah, so we'd have to get clarity on that too. Uh, I, I just, American Rescue Plan, uh, you know, re, uh, backfilling, uh, profit from companies that didn't create profit or, you know, make a profit because they were closed. Uh, backfilling or, or empowering healthcare workers, you know, but what's the concept? Where, where are we going to invest? A lot more clarity on what we would be getting to, is there?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we, we don't, yeah.
I mean, the, you know, a big, a big, a big focus of the American Rescue Plan is to prepare us to meet the health challenges of the future. So, uh, it's, it's pretty hard to meet any challenges if you don't have, uh, enough people working in, in the county's public health department, in dental offices, at the hospital. You know, I, I mean, uh, across the whole health se, healthcare sector, we're hearing.
Yep.
Um, we're hearing about the strain.
Yeah, so, uh, is it education, is it recruitment?
Yeah.
Attention, is it just paying for?
I mean, that was.
Salaries, I mean, there's all kinds of ways that could go.
I, I, I think they were, they were interested, you know, COCC was really in the center of this and they, they were, they were interested in, uh, you know, education and training. Um, you know, certifications, licensing, things like that. And, and, you know, I, I also said to them, I, I said, look, you know, um, part of the, you know, I'm sure that part of the challenge is that we need to have more people coming through the training pipeline. But, you know, um, there are also the bottom line issues in our community that, that housing is so darn expensive. Um, you know, that things like childcare are, are, are really, um, the, the availability of that is strained. So even if you can train up more people, you know, who, who's to say they're not just going to go somewhere else? Go, go, take their, take their skills and go somewhere else, yeah, so, um.
So we should invest in a wastewater system to lower the cost of SDC so people can get housing, which would fix the nursing issues.
Infrastructure is, infrastructure, you know, infrastructure is one component of the cost of housing, yeah.
We're going to be in a great, a great opportunity to really review this and make some good investments.
Yeah, I mean, the, yeah, I mean, for, in, in Tumalo, I think there's definitely a housing play. I mean, the, the phase one in Terrebonne is, you know, is the commercial, commercial corridor. And, and that's why, you know, I, it immediately made me, you know, think about the connection to the transient room tax revenues and, and tourism.
Yeah, so there's probably no other real action item today. Uh, well, so the other one I ticked off just because Sisters Rodeo Association has just got a direct ask out there. They did not be, were not able to have a rodeo two years in a row. I, where I was able to attend the Le Pine Rodeo this summer. Uh, is there, you know, and it's a hundred thousand dollar ask. Is there an amount that we might want to take off here? Just show support for that wonderful event here and.
So they're not going to be considered with everything going through a CIC?
They would be considered with all of the other asks going.
Okay, so that's already pooled up in there. See, and that's the only reason I kind of ticked that off, looking at it, thinking, okay.
I know it's been sitting there and I know they're wondering what's going on. And so anyway, but I thought they were, yeah. So hopefully they should get an answer, we should have an, um, idea on that program shortly.
That's fine, yeah, so it's already pulled in, good.
Good, thank you for pulling that. Hopefully we will have a Sisters Rodeo next year. I need another poster for my office. This is getting kind of lonely.
The one with the scratched out date and the new one hand.
Well, I don't know, it's just, it's like, oh my gosh.
So then affordable housing will be the next, then it'll come around kind of as a package. And, uh, uh, Food and Farm Alliance or whatever that looks like.
Second meeting with, uh, Affordable Housing, Workforce Housing Coalition is tomorrow. So we'll have, um, we have an agenda that we'll be discussing that's taking us from the first meeting and will hopefully put us on a path of more clarity when we can have a proposal and bring it back to the Board.
Yep, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you both so much for building the organization around, you know, considering these requests. You know, that, 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 that small business, uh, you know, relief framework, this housing framework, the, the childcare framework, it, it's extremely helpful in, you know, processing all these, all these, uh, these asks, you know, for, for really good and important projects in our community.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, Craig, one thing Jackie said to me yesterday, the Executive Director of CORE, was that when she actually worked on the program in Portland and the six hundred thousand they're asking for, I know she's part of that bigger group, but she was saying, well, what if you just loaned us the money and we kept using that funding stream and didn't just actually grant it? So I, I, I hope that what she says doesn't get lost in that, in the group.
So that, Commissioner, that's a, that's a real good point. Um, I just, a couple of days ago, ended up running into a couple of local bankers and having the same, very same conversation. And also with a, a affordable housing, um, builder. And so both of those have been invited to the conversation tomorrow. And, um, well, I think we'll end up taking that, that component that she was talking about and talking about it further, exploring, having some sort of a revolving fund that could sort of kickstart some of this workforce housing idea and continue on into perpetuity.
I know, I was telling Amy, you know, who is out searching for new properties, like Amy, we need you to be doing this every month. When you see the number of houses, single-family homes that we just had for Deschutes County in October, it was sixty-six for the month. And I asked Sheri to tell me the year numbers, but if you look back to two thousand and five and two thousand and six, when my home was built, the numbers were a lot bigger. So I think we had like twenty-five hundred applications or something, didn't we, in two thousand and six? I mean, and then, of course, we had the drop. But, you know, we are so short of houses here and in comparison, I just, you know, it's like, what can we do? And definitely CORE picks up and so does Habitat. So we just need more, um, affordable housing.
One, one other thought for, you know, how a relationship with, with CORE Community Land Trust could work. I mean, what, what's really, you know, their secret sauce, what, what's unique about that entity is that, um, they own the land in perpetuity and people just buy the house that's on the land. And if the, the concept is to have land in, you know, owned in perpetuity to support affordable housing, um, you could imagine that we could buy the land and, and own it and just let them use it. You know, so we, like, we buy. a chunk of land and, and, you know, and they get to build the houses on it. They get to sell the houses on it. And, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know. That, that's a, that's a really different kind of partnership relationship than I think we have with just about any other entity I can think of. But, you know, that is, you know, that is what makes their model work, is that they're taking the land cost out of, out of the cost of a, a unit of housing. And you can imagine scenarios where we're holding that land.
We is the government. The government provides common services for everybody in a, in a cost-effective and fair and equitable way. Is it fair and equitable to, for the government to own some people's lands and other people to own their private lands? I mean, that, you know, that's, that's kind of a hot, hot topic if you go into it a little bit.
Yeah. Well, I, um, you know, I'll, I'll offer the example. I mean, this is, you know, it's a pretty unique situation, but I lived in, I lived one of the, in one of the little tiny gateway towns for Yosemite National Park for three years. And in the town of El Portau, every, all of the land was owned by the federal government and people had long, very long-term leases and they were able to, to build and own homes on the federal property. And that was, you know, you know, actually, I mean, the, the whole, the whole driver behind that was workforce. You know, the federal government said, hey, you know, we have a need to have a workforce for this national park, you know, for this federal, federal facility. So we're going to, you know, we're going to make land available. So it's not.
And those houses were privately owned?
Yeah. Yeah. Now, it got real complicated when there was a, when there was a forest fire. Because, you know, the, the, you know, the, the, the national, the, the U.S. Forest Service that owned the, you know, surrounding land and then the National Park Service, they, they were willing to fight fire to a certain extent. And, you know, those homeowners, you know, would have liked the, the, the federal government to fight, you know, to fight fire even harder. So, you know, when, when push came to shove, there was, there was a question like, well, you know, your house may burn down.
So it's a lot cleaner relationship if I own a, a piece of land with borders on it and I have a neighbor and we have a relationship instead of the government owning the land underneath you and then the will of the current elected officials about how the land's going to be treated in the next generation. So I'm just pointing out, that, that could be an interesting topic.
But for people to get to live in the places that they desire to live, that's a, that is a relationship that many of we people are willing to accept. Yeah, the, all those cabins, well, not all of them, but many of the cabins in Camp Sherman are, you know, that, that same kind of setup. The federal government owns the land and the cabin is built on, you know, on federal, on federal land. They get to own the cabin, but they don't own, own the underlying land. I mean, this whole, you know, the, the CORE land trusts, you know, the, the, you know, their first project was CORE Zone. There's, there are five people who are delighted to let CORE Community Land Trust own the land underneath their, their house because they get.
Yeah. And that's a land trust.
They get a homeownership opportunity.
Yeah. That's different than, you know, that's, that's where I was going.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just saying, we could, you know, we could support that by giving them money or if we feel like we don't want to put out so much cash and, and not, not own anything afterwards, I mean, we could buy the land and, and, and hold it.
It'd be a good philosophy to invest in things that are going to stabilize people, provide cost-effective housing and create a tax base so we can pave the roads and provide services. I'm just saying, I'd like to keep it a little bit more simple instead of trying to add layers of, well, we did this a couple of years ago because of this and then, but these guys own the property and then the government owns your property. You know, I'm just thinking it's a lot simpler to keep a, you know, stratified system instead of mixing it up.
Yeah. Well, desperate times call for desperate measures. And I mean, we wouldn't even have a CORE Community Land Trust.
Well, this is where philosophy comes in because desperate times means the government's limiting land so much, which you don't agree with, that, that we're in this times, which the government made happen, which is the people. So I'm just pointing out, yeah, desperate times is man-made issue.
Yeah. Well, I, I would, I would point back to Redmond again. And, you know, if it's, if it's all about land supply, then why isn't, why isn't everything in the Redmond UGB built out already? Because it's available. Land supply, plenty of it. Okay. We don't have to talk about this anymore.
Okay. ARPA, ARPA discussion.
Yes.
Commissioners, I would just note that Chris Dodi is on the line if you have a question for him.
So I'll, I'll just confirm, as I say, that we talked about the Tumalo. We, you know, a couple of weeks, a couple of meetings ago, we defined a $500, $500,000 pool of resources, kind of the scope of what we think may be a placeholder in ARPA dollars. And today I mentioned that a feasibility study may be on the horizon, which could be, you know, some number, maybe $100,000, which was what we saw in Terrebonne. So I was just, just comparing with my fellow commissioners on that. So then, Chris, you know, you could clarify, would we be tasking you to put a feasibility study together again? So this is where we can have a discussion with our road director about how much sewer work you can end up doing again.
He loves it.
Well, is, yeah, just acknowledging that.
Yeah. The second time through will be a little more efficient than the first time through. So I, I think we've got a good scope of work that we put together for Terrebonne, a good process. And so, you know, I anticipate, you know, almost a similar type of, of process. But, you know, with Tumalo, we, we have a pretty engaged group of property owners already and, and that's been the biggest, biggest thing that, that we need to really make, make a good effort in the community. So not a problem. We can, we can get rolling on that.
Yeah. So then the, the will of the board is to proceed with a Tumalo, you know, looking at, looking into a Tumalo feasibility study, if that's the right thing for the community right now, because it's kind of that pre, pre-action stage. There's people talking, there's an existing system on one side of the road, there's people on the other side of the road next to the river, and there's no sewer authority. So we're just in that situation.
Makes a lot of sense. I think we can, I think it'll be very helpful for Tumalo in answering that question.
Okay. Good. And then was there another topic that?
No. Well, we just said the million for Redmond.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
And we are trying to, we'll determine probably in the next couple of weeks where that funding will come from, if it comes from TRT funding or if it comes from ARPA. But the million, just to do our capacity with Terrebonne to keep everything fair with Redmond doing capacity.
So, yeah, we're in preparation for meeting in joint meeting with Redmond and in a public meeting, so anybody can hear about this. But, yeah, we're thinking that buying in at, at a number that's the right number. So I think the number of, has been mentioned, a million. I don't know if that's the right number. But buying in for capacity now is, is generally supported by the three of us at this time. So we'll be able to share that with Redmond when we meet with them.
Yeah.
That's great direction. Thank you.
We're committed to the million dollars and we'll, we'll figure out where exactly it's coming from later.
That helps. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for joining us.
Chris, do you, do you have, do you have a sense of numbers for the Tumalo project yet? We were just trying, trying to put down, you know, placeholders on the, you know, on our ARPA worksheet.
Yeah. In terms of the feasibility study cost?
Yeah.
So.
Or feasibility plus other additional stages.
Sure. You know, the feasibility study in, in Terrebonne by, by comparison was about $100,000. I think we're, and of course, we were updating a prior study, whereas in Tumalo, we're starting a little bit from scratch and, and also considering another system, you know, that'll take a little more analysis. So probably in, in that similar ballpark. In terms of where we go after the feasibility study and in terms of incentivizing or, you know, providing resources to help formulate a sanitary district, you know, and then pursuing grant funding, you know, those would almost be identical costs to what we've incurred in, in Terrebonne as well. So that 50,000 for sanitary district, 50,000 for pursuit of, of funds if the community's ready for it. And the, the other part of, of the design work that we're doing in Terrebonne, mostly necessary now based on the forthcoming ODOT project and of course, the work in Redmond as well to understand how, how that's all going to connect. So probably $200,000 to replicate what we've done in Terrebonne in, in Tumalo.
Okay. That's a good, it's good to have a sense of that.
Well, we're all, we're all leaning into this one. We'll see where it goes.
Yeah, you bet. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Okay. Anything else for ARPA today? See, nothing else. We'll, we'll see you soon.
Much.
Yes. So as I say, if there's somebody available for executive session or we'll take a break till after 1:00?
Thank you. I, I coordinated with Eric Rapp. His executive session is better suited for this afternoon for the staff he's planning to bring. I haven't coordinated with Christie. I could see if, can see if Christie's available or we can just do that this afternoon as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else before lunch then?
No, I was just thinking, you know, they go tunnel to towers and they are saying T to T. And I'm thinking, okay, Terrebonne to Tumalo. So we've got our own T to T here.
Should we just put one sewer system in and just run a big long pipe the whole distance?
I don't think that's going to work, Commissioner Devan, but it's a, it's a, could be a cost-saving thought.
Yeah. It all runs downhill.
There you go. Whichever's lower.
So it's going to go to Lapine. Is that lower?
Oh, no. It's higher. The elevation's higher.
Sounds, but that's the top of the water.
We're moving up to Lapine these days.
Oh, yes. You and your, yes. Is it really going to snow in Monday in Lapine? Is that the story I hear?
I haven't followed it yet.
The, the important thing to understand is we are all downstream from Lapine.
That's it. That's true.
So when we, when we talk about, when we talk about water quality, groundwater quality concerns, it is something that we need to think about.
Okay. So we'll reconvene at 1:00 for our last agenda item and two executive sessions.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, welcome back to the Deshutes County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is our afternoon session on November 3rd. Uh, one o'clock item is consideration of signature of order authorizing ASA agreement for Cascade Medical Transport and Lepine Fire. Chris Bell.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Uh, as you know, this is the time and place set for consideration of resolution number, or excuse me, order number 2021-060. Uh, the issue at hand is the approval of CMT as a subcontractor of Lepine Rule Fire Protection District. Um, the board at this time has received testimony at hearing in addition to written documentation from both CMT, the proposed subcontractor, and Lepine Fire. Um, and also input from members of the community also at an open hearing and also I think just via some written information from folks down in the district that Lepine Fire serves. And so I think now it's fair to open up a discussion between the board and ultimately to consider whether to vote on the proposed order or if there is good reason to wait and obtain more information or have more discussions.
Wonderful, yeah. So this is our deliberations for the three of us with the information provided. Legislative matter, we could ask for more input possibly or whatever we want to do here. Um, we have the proposed document as provided by the district and also just a few slight edits as provided by one of the service providers in the area.
Actually, it's fascinating. They do call themselves CMTO.
I think it's Cascade Medical Transport of Oregon, so we've been referring to them CMT, certainly in the subcontract agreement, they're referred to as CMTO.
Right. I know, I was like, okay, of Oregon, good. Well, I'm really happy that we've gotten to this place in order to make South County, North Plymouth County, you know, Lake County, all the areas that they could help serve. It's really important.
Any thoughts?
Um, the structure of this contract is really important for Lepine Fire District and for that, for the South County community to get the full benefit of these contract resources. Um, you know, the way that this is structured will determine whether, you know, we are getting the most benefit possible out of, out of having that contracted supplemental capacity. It also determine, it could also really affect whether people are getting prompt response times for their, their critical medical needs. Um, so as I was, as I was reading this through, um, a couple of scenarios came to mind that the, you know, to me are sort of tests of that, whether, you know, we're getting the full benefit of these contract resources and whether people would get prompt response times. And, you know, I'd love to share those and see if between us and, you know, anyone else who is, you know, able to, you know, give testimony today, we can, we can, we can answer what those, how those scenarios play out. Uh, cause that'll, that'll determine in large degree whether I think that we have modified the language of this contract enough or whether there's still more work to be done.
So you, you have proposed modifications or you want to see if the contract fits the scenarios?
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna pose some scenarios and, and see, see how, see how what's set out here works. Um, yeah.
So, and then the chief may be a good person to communicate with, Mike Supkis, and he may be on the video call. Uh, is, is Mike Supkis out there? So, let's invite him in.
What I really like is that they're dating this August 1st of 2021, and they say they're dating it then, so in just a couple of months, we actually, they'll have a performance and optional issue discussion. So, that means that, you know, if this is implemented, it's gonna be tried, but it's only gonna be tried for really in reality, a couple of months. And then that meeting should happen so that we can really assess, you know, is this working?
So, yeah, okay, so you're acknowledging that the intention is to
Right.
optimize or feedback to fix something if it's not optimal.
Right, cause they say they're gonna meet at least twice a year and, but they're dating it the first of August. So I'm thinking like, okay, we've already had a couple of months and so that means that, you know, and especially with the weather, winter coming up, we really need to know that if they need to move closer to the area where they're picking up.
Uh, okay, so I'll acknowledge, so Chief Supkis is here, uh, so it's, this is, this is the deliberations of the board with looking for information. So as I say, it's wide open, we can do whatever we want here. Uh, one other topic though, do we have, so we have one feedback item, which is some word edits from Charlotte DeHaid at Lepine Community Clinic. Uh, does all, everybody have that? So it's just, yeah, some of the edits, okay, good. Uh, and then, uh, is there any other specific feedback like from our ASA, the concept of the membership of the ASA being able to see this proposal and other feedback?
Uh, yes, there is. Uh, Tom Kuhn, I thought was gonna, is, is he on, can you invite him in? He can speak to that. He, uh, he, uh, basically solicited feedback from, um, the ASA committee on, you know, whether to recommend CMT as a subcontractor. Right.
Okay, welcome back to the Deshute County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is our afternoon session on November 3rd. Uh, one o'clock item is consideration of signature of order authorizing ASA agreement for Cascade Medical Transport in Lapine Fire. Chris Bell.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, as you know, this is the time and place set uh for consideration of resolution number, or excuse me, order number 2021-060. Uh, the issue at hand is the approval of CMT as a subcontractor of Lapine Rural Fire Protection District. Um, the board at this time has received testimony at hearing in addition to written documentation from both CMT, the proposed subcontractor, and Lapine Fire, um, and also input from members of the community, also at an open hearing, and also, I think, uh, just via some written uh information from folks down in the district that Lapine Fire serves. And so I think now it's fair to open up a discussion between the board and ultimately to consider whether to vote on the proposed order, or if there is good reason to wait and obtain more information or have more discussions.
Wonderful, yeah. So this is our deliberations for the three of us with the information provided. Legislative matter, we could ask for more input possibly, or whatever we want to do here. Um, we have the proposed document as provided by the district and also just a few slight edits as provided by one of the service providers in the area.
Actually, it's fascinating. They do call themselves CMTO in that document.
I think it's Cascade Medical Transport of Oregon, so we've been referring to them as CMT, certainly in the subcontract agreement, they're referred to as CMTO.
Right. I know, I was like, okay, of Oregon, good. Well, I'm really happy that we've gotten to this place, um, in order to make South County, North Plymouth County, uh, you know, Lake County, all the areas that they could help serve. It's really important.
Any thoughts?
Um, the structure of this contract is really important for Lapine Fire District and for that, for the South County community to get the full benefit of these contract resources. Um, you know, the way that this is structured will determine whether, you know, we are getting the most benefit possible out of, out of having that contracted supplemental capacity. It'll also determine, uh, it could also really affect whether people are getting prompt response times for their, their critical, um, medical needs. Um, so as I was, uh, as I was reading this through, um, a couple of scenarios came to mind that, you know, to me are sort of tests of that, whether, you know, we're getting the full benefit of these contract resources and whether people would get prompt response times. And, uh, you know, I'd love to share those, um, and see if between us and, you know, anyone else who is, uh, you know, able to, um, you know, give testimony today, we can, we can, we can answer what those, how those scenarios play out, uh, 'cause that'll, that'll determine in large degree whether I think that we have modified the language of this contract enough, or whether there's still more work to be done.
So you, you have proposed modifications, or you want to see if the contract fits the scenarios?
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna pose some scenarios and, and see, see how, see how, what's set out here works. Um, yeah.
So, and then the chief may be a good person to communicate with, Mike Supkis, and he may be on the video call. Uh, is, is Mike Supkis out there? So, let's invite him in.
What I really like is that they're dating this August 1st of 2021, and they say they're dating it then, so in just a couple of months, we actually, they'll have a performance and optional issue, um, discussion. So, that means that, you know, if this is implemented, it's gonna be tried, but it's only gonna be tried for really in reality, a couple of months, and then that meeting should happen so that we can really assess, you know, is this working?
So, yeah, okay, so you're acknowledging that the intention is to
Right.
optimize or feedback to fix something if it's not optimal?
Right, 'cause they say they're gonna meet at least twice a year, and, but they're dating it the 1st of August, so I'm thinking like, okay, we've already had a couple of months, and so that means that, you know, and especially with the weather, winter coming up, we really need to know that if they need to move closer to the area where they're picking up.
Uh, okay, so, uh, I'll acknowledge, so Chief Supkis is here, uh, so it's, this is, this is the deliberations of the board with looking for information. So as I say, it's wide open, we can do whatever we want here. Uh, one other topic, though, do we have, so we have one feedback item, which is some word edits, uh, from Sharla DeHaid at Lapine Community Clinic. Uh, does all, everybody have that? So it's just, yeah, some of the edits, okay, good. Uh, and then, uh, is there any other specific feedback, like from our ASA, the concept of the membership of the ASA being able to see this proposal and other feedback?
Uh, yes, there is. Uh, Tom Kuhn, I thought was gonna, is, is he on, can you invite him in? He can speak to that. He, uh, he, uh, basically solicited feedback from, um, the ASA committee on, you know, whether to recommend, uh, CMT as a subcontractor. Uh, they were specifically asked, you know, do you agree that CMT, uh, should be authorized as a subcontractor, or otherwise, should they be approved as a subcontractor? Um, there's, uh, Tom, I believe he can talk to you specifically about the feedback he received from.
So just, yeah, okay, good. So one moment, Tom. Uh, so do you want to run through scenarios, or hear from these folks first? 'Cause
We could, we could hear from
Okay, let's do that. So Tom, Tom Kuhn, please provide, uh, yeah, ASA committee feedback.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. Tom Kuhn, Community Health Manager at Health Services and ASA Administrator. Uh, what I solicited from the group, uh, this week was whether or not they approved of CMT as a subcontractor of, um, Lapine Rural Fire Protection District, and, um, and that was simply, the question is, would you approve CMT as a subcontractor to provide emergency services? Uh, nine out of 11 members all responded yes. So it was, it was pretty much not asking, do you approve of the contract, but do you approve of CMT, and it was unanimous that everyone that responded said yes.
Uh, so two abstentions, or two noes? Or one?
No, the, two people that didn't, did not respond, Tom.
Just not responded, okay, yeah. So I guess there's different versions of that. Okay, so
And just to be clear, that they didn't, they didn't comment on the way the contract is currently structured, kind of like getting down to the levels of, you know, responding to specific addresses and things like that. They, they just, they were just commenting on whether CMT is qualified to be a, you know, to add capacity to be a subcontractor.
Correct.
Okay.
So that puts it squarely on the laps of the Board of Commissioners, which is what we're doing right now, debating and deliberating, uh, well, maybe not debating, but just deliberating towards, um, and, yeah, I'm supportive of seeing if we can just get this thing landed here. So I'm thinking, go ahead with scenarios, and we'll, we've got people out there to be able to communicate with.
I guess one, one other thing I'd, I'd like to ask, Chris and Tom, so we, we did hear back from the Lapine Community Health Clinic. Uh, did we hear back from any of the other, uh, medical facilities that were, that are called out in, you know, still called out in the, in the contract as it's currently written?
Uh, no, we did not. Uh, I heard back from Sharla, but I had emailed this to, um, to the Memory Care Center. Uh, Love Pearson is the director there, and also Oliver Tatum from St. Charles, and Sharla was the only one that responded.
Okay. All right. Um, well then, uh, in my hypothetical scenarios, I'll, I'll, you know, I'll use Lapine Community Health Center as the example. Um, so as I, as I read the, um, the, the current draft contract language, it, it does still seem to me that, uh, the way it's structured, the CMT, the additional CMT resources will primarily be targeted at those medical facilities as, as they're, as they're described in this contract language, um, which made me concerned about, uh, the promptness of response for those facilities, um, for high acuity calls. So I, I also spent some time, I just called Chris Perry to try to, you know, I don't, I didn't understand in fine detail, you know, kind of the, the procedure for a call coming in, uh, 911 essentially making a determination on the acuity of that call, uh, them issuing a dispatch, and then, you know, who would actually respond? So I, I have a better handle on that now. Um, and so the scenario I, I'm, I'd be interested in asking Chief Supkis about would be, um, if, uh, if a call came in from, say, Lapine Community Health Clinic, and, um, 911 through their, through their protocol, uh, assigned it a high acuity, like a D or an E, uh, and then put out the call to, um, responding ambulances in, um, the Lapine Fire Service Area. Um, is it possible that, um, is it possible that, well, I guess, you know, there's two, two things I'd like to ask about this scenario. A, is it possible that Lapine Fire would disagree with the determination, or kind of overrule, or change the determination that's made by 911? Um, and, uh, is it, uh, if, if they did not change the determination, would, uh, Lapine Fire respond with its core, would, would they ever respond with their core ambulances? Or would they wait, essentially, say, say, okay, well, this is, well, we agree that this is a D or an E, but we're still going to, um, save this one for CMT to come likely at this point from the, from, from a Bend location to, uh, address that call?
So, uh, that's for Mike Supkis at that point? That's Commissioner Chang asking Chief for that?
Yeah, can, yeah, can you unpack how that would play out for me, Chief Supkis?
Um, Commissioner Chang, I'd be happy to. Um, first, the assumption that CMT is gonna be coming from Bend is, is a possibility, not a probability. Um, they'll be all over. Um, any call that the Charlie Delta Echo gets multiple unit dispatched to them if we have them. So the work is called backward. If it's a serious call, there're gonna be multiple units responding. Not only is, um, CMT going to be, and you're right, they'll, their, the contract targets their service at the times that we're the busiest, and the times that the fire district is the busiest, when our healthcare centers are open, and people can't get care there, and so they have to be moved to Bend. Um, if they get a Charlie Delta Echo call, which has been screened by 911, our standard run card now sends multiple units to those calls. Included in those units now will be, uh, CMT. And so the, the simple answer is, if you have a serious call at the Lapine Clinic, and there's a unit in Lapine, Lapine unit will be going to the clinic.
Okay. So is it, um, will some of your core ambulances be responding to calls like that, or will you save those calls for CMT to respond from wherever they are, wherever they're at?
No, there, there'll be multiple units going, the ambulance isn't gonna be saved. Um, our system works, Commissioner Chang, that we save lives by stabilizing people in the field, and that's why it's so important for our paramedics to get there. Um, the hospital cures them, but we save them. And so it's really important to get our paramedics on scene quickly to stabilize that patient as best we can. And then if they're still unstable, we're gonna fly them, okay? They're, they're gonna go in a helicopter. But if we stabilize them, then they get transported, and they either will be transported by us, or they'll be transported by CMT. But the response time to the clinics are not going to be, if it, this, this contract is not going to increase the response time of paramedics to the clinic on Charlie Delta Echo calls, it's actually gonna lower the timeframe of folks getting to the clinic because we'll have more resources available. And plus, it's gonna, the big piece here is, is the folks, and I want to keep reminding the board, the people that are home, on the highway, and in on the range, or whatever, and they don't have any care, they don't have a doctor, they don't have a nurse, they're not in a professional healthcare facility, they are also going to get better care, quicker care, because of this contract. And that, that, the majority of our calls, and that's what this is all about, is to get more resources for those folks there.
Yeah.
And so, and, and that, it, so the answer to your question is, there is no delay by doing this contract, it's actually an improvement for all.
That's, I'm, I'm, thank you for that assurance. Um, so my, my other, my other question, my other scenario, was exactly about the, the people who are calling from home, um, who, who may not be high acuity calls. So, uh, from reading the contract, I, it was not clear to me what would, what would happen if someone, uh, you know, young, healthy person, otherwise healthy person, you know, falls and, you know, slips and falls at their house, um, calls 911, you know, needs transport. Um, but, um, it wasn't clear to me, uh, from the way the contract is written, whether CMT would ever, um, respond to those calls. So if, if a call comes in and it's more like a D or an E from a private residence, um, would you ever use CMT for, for those calls, or are you only responding, uh, to those calls with your, um, your Lapine Fire core ambulances?
The simple answer, and if you know, for me, I don't give simple answers very often, is yes. CMT would be used for those calls. We use the closest available resources to go, and then the best resource to transport at that time. Though CMT is an additive resource to those people at home also. In the contract, you'll see, uh, either by added onto the run card, or by request of our duty officer, we can use CMT to backfill us if we get short. Now, the key here is, 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 there is an intent in this contract to help keep our crews in district, remember, 'cause we're not just talking medical calls here, Commissioner Chang, we're also talking fire calls. And CMT will not be responding as a fire truck.
Right.
And, and we're in a very firehead, so our crews need to be able to get on a fire truck once in a while. And, um, people, we don't take reservations for that, so they need to, so if CMT is available, and we can use them for a transport, um, we will do so. But again, all Charlie Delta Echo calls, based on our run card, get multiple response. Right now, when we have students available, like we do today, they're not in class, and we have senior students who can run an independent medic, today we're fortunate to have three medics in service. We just had a code 99 call about ninety, though, sixty minutes ago, ninety minutes ago. We sent two ambulances to that call. We sent an ALS paramedic career ambulance, we sent a, um, um, command engine with that, with that call, and we also sent our student BLS ambulance to that call. Um, I can't say who transported, how the term, the call turned out, but multiple resources were sent. What this contract does is, in that call scenario, another ambulance that will be added to that ticket will be CMT. Now that's when we're fully staffed and everybody's here.
Yeah.
So, I'm thinking, uh, there's a, ha, during business hours during the week, there's a probability, some number, I don't, I don't want to estimate what number, that a Lapine ambulance could be at St. Charles, right? So then they're already that thirty-five, forty miles away, thirty miles away, whatever it is. So that's, uh, so then you're sending multiple resources means that command vehicle and the other ambulances in the district. I'm just thinking, you know, that, that's what happens, 'cause I see them all the time when I'm driving back and forth.
No, no, no. I mean, you know, the, this, this question, and I, I may not have, I may have, uh, I may have misspoke when I posed the question, but, so, but, what I was trying to get at was, you know, private residence, low acuity call, so I guess that would be an A or a B, not, sorry, not, I may have said D or E, or something like that. But, you know, like a low acuity call, private residence, would, would we use CMT for that? Um, operating on the assumption that there will be times when they are, when they are the, the farther away, uh, resource, um, because it, it seems like that is the, the benefit, uh, you know, that's, or that's one of the big benefits of engaging CMT in this contract, is to have them available for, uh, you know, if they are a little bit farther away, have, have them available for lower acuity stuff, less urgent things, um, to, you know, increase your capacity. Um, and, and, you know, in, in that case, you know, you, if it's, if it's a low acuity, an A or a B, uh, according to 911, according to, to your determination, um, that's someone who, who we, we think should be able to wait a little bit longer. Um, so, uh, uh, if this contract is, is, uh, if the language in this contract really emphasizes the use of CMT for the medical facilities, I wanted to know that, uh, CMT would still be an effective, you know, like, effective surge capacity for lower acuity stuff, uh, coming from, you know, private residences as well?
The answer to that, Commissioner Chang, is also an absolute yes. In fact, I can honestly say today, we do do that. Um, when we assess a patient, say it's a low acuity, Alpha Bravo, and a patient isn't in a critical or dangerous situation, but they do need a reasonable, stable transport to the hospital, we can't call CMT directly because of the ASA thing, and that's why we went through this whole thing with the ASA board and this contract we're doing now, and, but the individual homeowner, the resident at home can say, we can assess them, and we can say, look, you have another option to get in the hospital. Our position is, we will always take somebody if they want to go. That's what we do. But sometimes they, you know, there might be a better option here, um, and, and quite frankly, a much less expensive option, and would you consider going with CMT? And if they say yes, they do that. We currently do that with one of the healthcare providers in this community. Um, our Prairie House Community Care does that almost on a daily basis. We go there in the initial call, the patient's stable, and then they determine, because it makes sense for their staff and our staff, that they then use CMT, but they make the call to CMT, if not the fire district making the call. Um, what this contract does is they put the fire district in charge of making that call for CMT.
Great. Um, well, that, those were, those were the scenarios I wa, I wanted to just kind of test, test this contract structure against, and, um, you know, I, I appreciate you providing me those assurances that, you know, we're gonna use CMT to the maximum extent possible, uh, to provide benefit for the community, and that, and that, you know, this structure is going to provide people with, um, the best response times possible. Um, I, I, you know, I, I still think that the way that, you know, the, the language that's used in the contract, it really does, you know, it does give the impression that, you know, you're saving CMT for these specific medical facilities, so, you know, I would encourage a little bit more tinkering, uh, modification of the language in this contract, but, um, you know, with the assurances you've, you've provided, I would, I, I, I don't have any concerns about, um, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to block this contract from moving forward.
Well, great. Good to talk it through a little bit here today.
Supkis, I don't know if you were listening, but when I, um, did make my comment, and what I really like in here is that you have dated this document, if it is all signed, August 1st, and by stating that you're going to have, uh, meetings every six months from that date, then that means that in February 1st, you're gonna have a meeting with CMTO and make sure that everything is working, and that gives you a couple of months to just, you know, see what is happening with the community, how well the response is, and, you know, honestly, who knows what kind of winter we're gonna have, and you serve such a large area that I would think after three months, that might be a really worthwhile, um, plan to get together. So I'm thankful that you have that date, and I think it should be really advantageous, just for the safety of everyone, just to, like, perhaps, you know, there'll be something that will come out, an unintended consequence, it's good, or you never know. So maybe CMT will be, you know, realize that they are so busy down there that they really do want to have someone closer.
Yes, thank you. Um, the purpose of that is like in any contract, you want, and our mutual aid contracts have the same language, but in reality, Commissioner Dare, we'll probably be meeting with them once a week, or speaking with them almost on a daily basis. Um, that's the way we do with our mutual aid partners, but in a contract, you have to have some, you know, you don't, this isn't a replacement resource, like we just let CMT go do something and never touch base. If you look at the whole base of this contract, they're coming in under our wing, and we're responsible for everything they do. And in order to make them successful, in order to be successful to serve our community, we have to be involved in every call they go on. And, and that, we're not trying to shut the calls off here, we're just trying to add physical resources, and Commissioner Chang said, the best resource for that particular situation to take care of this community, and in some cases, with CMT's efficiency, the private sector, their responses, um, they're very good at transporting the lower acuity patients. Um, the upper end acuity patients are going to get on, um, life, flight, and air link. However, we don't need a contract to call them, you know, I wish it was the way, the other way around, but, uh, the ASA allows us to do that.
Great.
And we will.
Uh, thank you.
So the other
you're saving CMT for these specific medical facilities. So, you know, I would encourage a little bit more tinkering, modification of the language in this contract, but, you know, with the assurances you've, you've provided, I would, I, I don't have any concerns about, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to block this contract from moving forward.
Well, great. Good to talk it through a little bit here today.
Supkis, I don't know if you were listening, but when I did make my comment, and what I really like in here, is that you have dated this document, if it is all signed, August 1st. And by stating that you're going to have meetings every six months from that date, then that means that in February 1st, you're going to have a meeting with CMTO, and make sure that everything is working, and that gives you a couple of months to just, you know, see what is happening with the community, how well the response is, and, you know, honestly, who knows what kind of winter we're going to have, and you serve such a large area, that I would think after three months, that might be a really worthwhile plan to get together. So I'm thankful that you have that date, and I think it should be really advantageous, just for the safety of everyone, just to, like, perhaps, you know, there'll be something that will come out, unintended consequence, it's good, or you never know. So maybe CMT will be, you know, realize that they are so busy down there that they really do want to have someone closer.
Yes, thank you. The purpose of that is like in any contract, you want, and our mutual aid contracts have the same language. But in reality, Commissioner Dare, we'll probably be meeting with them once a week, or speaking with them almost on a daily basis. And that's the way we do with our mutual aid partners. But in a contract, you have to have some, you know, you don't, this isn't a replacement resource, like we just let CMT go do something and never touch base. If you look at the whole base of this contract, they're coming in under our wing, and we're responsible for everything they do. And in order to make them successful, in order to be successful to serve our community, we have to be involved in every call they go on. And, and that, we're not trying to shut the calls off here, we're just trying to add physical resources, and Commissioner Chang said, the best resource for that particular situation, to take care of this community. And in some cases, with CMT's efficiency, the private sector, their responses, they're very good at transporting the lower acuity patients. The upper end acuity patients are going to get on life flight and air link. However, we don't need a contract to call them, you know, I wish it was the way, the other way around, but the ASA allows us to do that.
Great.
And we will.
Thank you.
So the other kind of tangible item are the references to facilities in, that Charlotte had, you know, the edits. And I do support, you know, make it a little bit more generic, just that, pulling it back just that little bit, because, you know, one of the statements is, open during the hours of 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and it doesn't have to be because of medical facilities, just business hours during the week. So some of those statements, I, I support changing those, those words in the document, just to make it a little bit more generic. Chief, you mentioned that, you know, the, the, you know, the on-duty, the real-time decisions will be implemented as such, so I don't know that we're changing this, the function or the intention, and it's got to be a good relationship with CMT and the clinics, you know, so I mean, hopefully, we're setting up ourselves up for very positive relationships on all ends. So that means, yeah, there's a proposal to, you know, take some of Charlotte's edits and put them in here.
I would support that.
Yeah. Any discussion, Chief?
Certainly make those edits. Don't want to kick this can down the road, I'll be quite frank. The reason we had those, those sideboards on this, was when we originally started this, there was concern, not, you know, from the chiefs and from the ASA Advisory Committee and those folks, you know, how far do you open the barn door? So in the light of transparency, and also to give CMT some, you know, they've got to make a business model on this, and how they're going to make this work and pay for it, because we're not using tax dollars to do this.
Yes.
Here, the timeframe, that we're looking like where we need help. And yes, it is kind of coincides with when the clinics are open. That's what's been hammering us. As we already stated, CMT is going to help us with all the calls, but we wanted those sideboards on here, so everyone kind of knew this is, you know, what the expectation of CMT was going to be, what they had to live up to, what they needed to plan for, and, and my elected board officials have gone through this contract. This contract was already written 18 months ago, and been kicked around quite a bit, so, and legal, looked at and things like that, so we're feeling pretty confident. Can it always be better? Absolutely. Are we willing to make it better? Absolutely. But I'm going to advocate my ultimatum act, if you would, please.
Yeah, well, and I'm ready to act. As I say, I'm showing support for referring to community members instead of medical care facilities in your document, from the facilities, just removing it, instead, for anybody that's calling for services. Because you can implement it like that. If CMTO is going to be dispatched to the clinics during those business hours, through a policy and procedure that gets implemented and agreed upon by all parties, you know, we're not going to have it in this document, but the services and resources are going to be available. And if, yeah, if it doesn't provide a business case for CMTO, then we'll find that out, too. So as I say, I'm not, I don't have a final draft now because of these proposed changes, but pretty much what was provided by Charlotte DeHate is acceptable. So there, and there's only about three, four, or five of those changes. As I say, it's not in a final version right now, but it's
Yeah, I, with the, with those changes, I'm ready to, I'm ready to vote in support.
Great, okay.
Yes, I would hate to have this can kicked another day, so.
Okay, so at this time, we do show support for this. Let's get it to a motion, this is going to be a board order. Yeah, let's do that.
I move signature of board order number 2021-060, authorizing service contract between Lapine Fire District and Cascade Medical Transport of Oregon.
Including the modifications as recommended by Lapine Community Health Clinic?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's been motioned and seconded, so this is, so this is an order, accepting a proposed agreement, this will reference this agreement between Lapine Fire and Cascade Medical Transport, and also I would like to say, you know, for review, for review in the future. I know the parties are going to work together real well on this, but when the ASA, if anybody has any thoughts, feedback, or if things aren't working well, this is an opportunity to say, okay, let's put it on the table and try to make it better, or we will make it better. So, just acknowledging that. Any other comments?
And this, and this contract does have a renewal in two years, right? So that, that's, you know, if, I'm sure there's going to be constant evaluation and, you know, refinement along the way, in, in practice along the way, but that would be, at, you know, at latest, that's a, that's a meaningful opportunity to make any changes that are needed.
Great. So any other discretion? Seeing then, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. All three of us are voting yes for this. Congratulations, there we go. We're moving forward, private resources available for Lapine Ambulance Service Area.
Looking forward to seeing what you can accomplish with, with these resources.
So, yeah, anything else, Chris, to business case about closing this up?
No, I think the board has voted. I think just need to get the order signed and, and filed, and it'll be good to go.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. So that's it for our published items today. At this time, we do have two executive sessions, or is there any other items, such as other stuff to be discussed?
Mentioned the Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting that we had yesterday, and the big upshot from that one being this idea of, you know, essentially a workforce accelerator for healthcare.
Well, we had the County College Graduation last night, and then also the Central Oregon Association Realtors Award for the Stabilization Center, so. I feel bad, we could, if we would have coordinated just a little bit more, because I wasn't sure if we were going to go up or not, and then I didn't know how much to say, and I really wanted to get it to Holly, so we could have really had some fun with it, but it would have taken us a half hour or two possibly, so I was just kind of half in and half out at the beginning there, so I apologize for not making more of a, you know, statement, I guess, or handing it off.
And don't forget, Jbar J was recognized, too.
Yeah, so that was
And they've been working on our Veterans Village, so, so thankful.
It was, yeah, a good event last night. Anything else? So seeing then,